And then, thank you for being with us tonight. We will listen to Brian, we might call in the next few minutes, but after our discussion with board members, Shirley and Kim, Kim would like to be the chairman, if the rest of the board will be okay with that. Okay, cheers, you know, he is chairman, so both of you have Kim here as chairman of the utility board. And now we can officially start at 5:30.
Camera.
Hello, Brian? Hello?
Hey.
What's up? Okay, so you're with us.
I also.
Okay, all right, I just made a presentation to welcome Neil and Dan and inform the board, and the board agreed to have Kim here as the chairman of the utility board.
Okay.
All right.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and start.
Okay, I'm gonna call and order the Stewart-Mannus Boyd Utilities Meeting Thursday, January 11th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll do roll call, Crawford here, Sherman here, Jones here, Balding.
Here, well, okay.
And Kim here. Okay, how about agenda approval?
Need a motion.
We have a motion.
And Shirley, second again.
Okay.
How do you vote?
Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Balding?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kim, yes. Okay, consent agenda, need a motion for that?
No.
Moved by Balding's? Need a second? Second, second by Kalafun.
Okay, Lo, Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Balding?
Yes.
And Kim, yes. Okay, Midwest Partnership Annual Membership Contribution, Brenda Dudley.
Hello, I am with Midwest Partnership, which is economic development for Adair and Guthrie Counties. And I want to thank you for your past contribution. Last year, you donated $1,782 to Midwest Partnership, which is a dollar per capita. It's been, so I'm hoping that you will continue to support us and support us this year with the same amount. Some of the things that we do, and I, I think in the past I did. So some of the stuff that we do is we do business retention, and some of the things that we do with that are we go around and we do BRI interviews, which are business retention and expansion interviews. And we meet with some of the bigger community or some of the bigger companies in the community and we ask them. It's a state thing, so we ask them how they're doing, are they expecting to expand, are they developing new products? Are they having any problems? And then with the way that they answer that, we are able to identify where they need help and we can direct them to the help that they need. Sometimes it's help that I can provide, and then other times I go to other resources or other tools to help them. We also go into smaller businesses and do a similar thing, get to know people because I feel like when you get to know somebody, they open up and they freely talk and share their problems. We also do business attraction, and we use Greater Des Moines Partnership and Iowa Area Development Corporation, and they help us with that. They go to trade shows and they, probably once or twice a month, I get information from them, are people that are interested in coming to Iowa locations. Lots of times it's not what we need because they either looking for spec building that's already built, which we don't have right now, or they need a lot of water. Last couple have, they needed a ton of water, an amount of water that we can't supply. But I've also worked with Greater Des Moines Partnership, and they started this site selection website. It's like a certified site, which is a state thing, but Greater Des Moines Partnership, it's a site selection. And we have two sites on there in Adair County out of the money that they have on their, their website. One is a Rail Park and Stewart, and the other one is a Drayer, Landover in Adair, and it's right off the interstate. So they go, like I said, to trade shows and they support us and advertise for us and try to get an industry interest in those sites. We also have LOIS on our website, Midwest Partnership's website. And LOIS stands for Location One Information System, and that's where we list available buildings or available sites within the two county area. So again, a lot of it feeds up to LoopNet, which is what realtors use. So we have that information out there, so when people are looking, we're ready, we have all the information out there that they need to, to consider us. With a small business development, we help businesses launch, maintain, and grow their business. And the ways we do that are with financial help, RFLs, we work with those. Yes, we have a list of grants that we can offer businesses, our existing businesses. And again, we have a lot of tools and resources. And like it's been for the past several years, workforce, housing, and childcare are the things that people are really struggling with. And if you can get those, you can hopefully get a business to come to the area. We started, because of the workforce challenge, we started a Facebook page that is working in Adair and Guthrie Counties. So employers that are looking for employees, we help them post that job opening on that Facebook page. And then we've been working with some daycares, talking about how we can help, and we had a meeting scheduled for Saturday that we have had to postpone that one. And then tourism is also part of economic development. Economic development is basically anything that increases the tax base. The other things I do are I go to a lot of meetings. It seems like every meeting I go to, whether it's a development meeting, a city council meeting, a chamber meeting, just to listen to people talk. I usually present what we're doing and, like if there's an event, invite people to the event. But if you just sit and listen, you can find out what's going on and where people need help, so step in that way. We also have a growing Facebook page. We have a website that lists all kinds of information on anything you want to know, so if you haven't looked at that, take a look at our website. And then we send out a monthly newsletter also. We are planning to, several years ago, you and I gave a grant for a five-year grant to do at Entrepreneur, which is where you invite business leaders with expertise like maybe an attorney, a financial planner, those types of people. And then you invite startup businesses or existing businesses to come to that as a way to network and learn from each other and, and help those businesses. And then we're having our annual dinner coming up. Was that in your packet? Yeah, okay. So our annual dinner is gonna be January 25th over at the Casey Kennedy Building, starts at 6 o'clock. And we have a really good speaker this year, Phil Manner, who is, he talks about rural development type things, so I hope that you can attend that too. So any questions for me?
Thank you. If we're okay with that contribution, we give it a go again, because it's okay with the board, we need a motion to. Two seconds.
One second.
The motion.
Okay, how you vote, Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Balding?
Here.
Okay. Kim, yes.
Thank you.
Snyder and Associates. Oh, Beanstrom and Kim, Engineering Services, Elevative Water Storage Tank.
Good, Brian, you got you.
Sorry, Bob, that was.
That's okay.
Something crossed it.
Okay, that's it.
We're losing all kinds of time.
Yeah.
Welcome. Forrest, my name is Forrest Aldrich with Beanstrom and Kim. At the, I think, the middle member meeting, the board had requested that we take a look at the two water towers and the difference in elevation. And so we put that together. I did a really deep dive on that, a 10-page report in your packets. Hopefully you didn't fall asleep reading that, there was a lot there. This is a pretty complicated matter, manner, or matter with these two elevations. So I wanted to go into the very nitty-gritty details for those that wanted to have a deep dive. For those that may not have had time to read the whole report, I'll kind of go through, not as deep a dive as I did in the report tonight, but just to kind of hit the, the highlights and kind of large conclusions. So first thing is, just so for some background information, we are looking at, you know, where do we go from here? We did not look at how we got here, why are the towers different height? You know, the how and the why, we didn't look into, we're only looking at how, you know, what's our recommendation on moving forward? So, so just keep that in mind. We can look into the why and the how if the board wants us to, but that's not really what we looked at too much at this point. So just a little background, I know we have some new board members, just to bring everybody up to speed. I did this little sketch five minutes ago, so should have been a little fancier, I know, and a handout, but this is, this is the way to get. So, so this is our old tower. And it's a leg tower with the body and the legs coming down, they're tapered legs. That's right up here to the east. And then the new tower is a steroid, which is basically, looks like a golf ball on a tee, is the best way to look at it. And the difference between the high water level in the old tower and the high water level in the new tower is about 14 feet. So that's the difference between the two. The total, the new tower, the total volume is 31 feet. So at night, water seeks its own level at night. During the day, there's water usage, but every night, water goes down and every seeks a common level. And so this tower, when cleared full, the old one, this new one is only half-full. About half-full, a little over half-full, 14 foot down out of 31, so just a little bit over half. And so this is 150,000 gallons of storage. This, when full, is 250. So you're, you're losing half here, but a little, little less than half here, 250. So that's, that's kind of the background where we're at. Snyder and Associates had put together a, a kind of an alternatives matrix kind of thing that we went off of. And so we looked at that, and so when you look at that report, basically the alternatives match up with that matrix. We did add another alternative that, to that list. And we added another column that we think is important for the, the board and staff to, when evaluating the alternatives. So here's, here's the handout on that. And we can go through each one of these. These.
Is that this one?
Extra. Okay. I have one edge.
Okay, okay, good. Sorry.
So the alternative we added, alternatives 1A through E was putting an elevation valve on the old tower. And basically, what alternate five is, is putting an elevation valve on the new tower. So that's the added line there in red at the bottom. The added column we added was normal system operation. So what that means is when staff is operating the system, how close does this, this alternative get to operating the system like they have been, basically? Not having to do extra work, extra monitoring, you know, extra things. It's how does this get back to kind of how they're operating the system now? So I thought that was a pretty important column to be looked at, because otherwise Ben could be doing all kinds of things that would be above and beyond normal kind of things. So that was what that column was added for. Just to go through these alternatives and the, if it's in black, we agree with the original matrix. If it's in red, that that's something new that we added to the matrix. So just to kind of go through these again, just so everybody's up to speed. The elevation valve, what that does is basically, back to my whole drawing. You put an elevation valve here, and as this tower gets full, this valve shuts off. And the tower doesn't get any fuller, and then allows this one to keep on going to all the way full. And then this one stays shut unless the water level drops enough, so down to about a third full, then this valve would open and, and be operational again. Well, the problem is, is that this valve's closed, and normally you operate in about the top five to seven feet of the tower. This water will never, never empty, it'll stay full and it'll just be there forever. And so to do that, you've got to lower this tower way down here in the bottom to get that water to turn over. If you don't, with weather this weekend, you'd have an ice cue by next week if you didn't move that water. And the other is you need to turn that water over, otherwise it will get stale on you. And so you need to fluctuate this. We think once a week, you need to fluctuate this down to get that water freshened up and get some movement in there and to kind of make sure it stays fresh on the top of the, of the water level as well. So with the altitude valve over here, Ben's moving this water down here once a week to get that to move. And in weather like this, he's gonna have to monitor that a lot. And now you're, you've lost a lot of your water volume doing that, so just make sure you don't have a fire while that's going on. So, or have peak demands going on while you have that lowered. So that's our concern with the health, altitude valve or elevation valve, it's, people call it different things. But it's the same, meaning the same thing. So that's putting a valve on here, and so that's our concern with that. So you get yeses all the way across for ones through 1D. 1A and 1B are just kind of slices of doing the same thing a different way. They're really accomplishing the same thing. When we evaluated it, we just kind of lumped them all together in our evaluation. If the board wanted to go that way, we could dive a little deeper. We did go on explanation between mechanical and solenoid, just for background information. I'm not gonna go into that tonight, you can read the report if you want to go into that difference. So we also looked at putting a, that alternate five, putting a solenoid valve on, or the altitude elevation valve on the new tower. But what that does is says, okay, this new tower is never gonna be more than half-full. And so you get your 150 plus 125, so you end up at 375,000, or 275,000 gallons. Probably less volume than what you'd want, so that's where that alternate five, you get a no, where it allows full storage. So you don't get your full storage with that alternate five, but we wanted to look at that impact. So that's that alternate five. The alternate two, which is a dual pressure zone. Basically what that's doing is you're cutting the town in half, close a bunch of valves so that they operate independently, have some pressure reducing valves to be able to go from the high to the low, but you can't go from the low to the high without putting a booster station, create some dead ends, creates a bunch of pressure, else for a lot of maintenance, it's cost more, costs more than anything else. So yes, that's an option that, really not one that we recommend at all. But again, we talked about that in the report, but that's what that, that dual pressure zone is doing. And the other problem is that, you know, the 14-foot difference, if you take that 14-foot, it turns into pressure, the pounds of pressure, you're only looking at six PSI. So six PSI between the two zones and trying to get the valves to operate in that six PSI is pretty tough. So when we see different pressure zones, it's in communities that are really hilly or have a lot of elevation, you know, really next to a river and on a bluff kind of thing, where you have extreme differences. That's where we see the pressure zones. So that's kind of our last thought. Decommissioning the existing tower, that's an option. Two towers are awfully nice though for operational, you know, you can take a tower down to paint, to do maintenance, to check on, you know, what's going on with the mixers. And so two towers really give you a lot of benefit as far as operations go. But the tower is 50 years old, might come down someday, but I don't know there's any immediate spot. Seems, coating seems to be pretty good. Towers, we're working with towers that are 100 years old. So, but that is an option, but you lose the storage volume, again, you lose that 150,000 of storage. We talked to a contractor that does that, called Miss Out. This is a water tower contractor and they, this is what they do for a living, is raising and lowering towers. So we spent quite a bit of time talking to them. Hope they have as many of these, but. Okay. So we spent quite a bit talking, time talking to Pittsburgh Tank Tower Group. And they specialize in flooring and raising towers, used to be at Des Moines, they hadn't, they were out of Des Moines for a long time. So, and actually the ones that built the same tower a long time ago. Raising the tower, if you remember looking at it, they've got the battered legs. And we're dealing with a tower that is 60 years, 50, 60 years old. And so raising that up, you've got to, we'd have to check the steel to make sure it's okay. Because you're, by raising it up, you're adding more weight to the existing legs, and they're battered. And so battered legs and then put like a 14-foot straight leg underneath it, look kind of funny. But if you, or you'd have to keep the batter, you'd have to put new foundations in. If you kept the batter, you'd have to check the, that existing steel could handle the, the additional weight of the additional 14-foot up in the air. And not only the weight, but it's the wind load as well, which is more important than the weight. So a lot of things we'd have to look into. So did agree that that's, the risk level is pretty high. A lot of things that have to be evaluated to raise that tower. And we did not go into an evaluation other than here's all the hurdles that would have to be overcome to have that be a viable option. Lowering the tower, however, is a lot easier because the, the weight is going down, the wind loads are going down. We have all the chalk drawings on the existing tower, it's brand new steel. And they, so they do it quite often for various reasons. And basically they take a big crane and lift it up and take a chunk out and re, lower it and reconnect. There's a lot of things to reconnect, you know, ladders, pipes, communication, power, you know, a lot of things in that tube that are going up to the top that would have to be reconnected, but taking something shorter is easier than making things taller. So we did lower that from a risk level from high to medium, and we think it is practical to lower the existing tower. And would you say the change in water pressure by lowering is negligible or? Two PSI. Okay. So yeah, pretty negligible. And, and it matched what you have now. So what if it's not two PSI less than you have now, it's the same as you have now. This is where it's, was supposed to be, I mean, right? So, yeah, so, yeah, so, so we would match. Now, I have heard a couple things that we have not vetted out. One is that if you're below 35 PSI in a part of town, then USDA starts getting a little nervous about funding because you need to have that 35 PSI. Talked to Ben and he assures me that we've got 50 PSI in the south side of town, so I think we're okay there. But I did hear some of that, possibly, assuming they got the 50. We did check the elevations and it's pretty close to that, just on the elevation lines.
Forrest, quick, quick question. First of all, Dick, you've such a thorough deep dive on this, I appreciate it. The elevation that is, it's off eight feet, but again, the, the tower is additional six?
Total difference between the high water level in the existing, or the old water tower and the high water level in the new water tower is 14 feet.
So is that a contractor and construction error, not just a design issue?
I said at the beginning, I'm not going into how or why, just where do we go from here?
Okay.
So I have some thoughts on that, but not to share it.
No, that's fine, sure.
Our recommendation in looking at all of this, if you look at this table, the only one that gets yeses all the way across is lowering the existing tower to match the overflow on the old tower. And so that's our recommendation to the board is to pursue lowering the new tower to match the existing tower. That provides the operational, you know, needed for, for staff, so that they don't really have to be anything, including water elevations up and down, or worrying about valves not working or communication not working. And so it seems to, in the long term, and that tower's gonna be there for a long, long time. And we're talking another 50, 100 years, that that tower's gonna be there. And in that long term, that's kind of the, the best solution that we see. And in that long term, that's kind of the best solution that we see.
That would be as we, or as the board had planned at the time of design and development and implementation, is what your remedy is, or your recommendation or remedy?
Not sure I followed that, Brian, but the recommendation is to make the tower Is that what your question was, Brian?
Yeah, it's, I, that, this would be as, as expected for the utility customers to have them same height. The only question, I'm not sure I got to the outcome of what Neil had asked about the water pressure and the gaps that could be created with the financing risks from USDA. Is that, does that require more work, as you had mentioned, to understand that?
So the water pressure would be the same as it is now. There would be no change in the current water pressure in town.
Correct.
And again, if we kept the tower at the same height that it is and put in the valves and everything to be able to increase the pressure, we, the most we could get would be two to three PSI is the most we could get out of that. So yeah, it's not changing things a lot. I guess, I guess 2.31, it's a little more than that.
It depends if we're talking about that eight foot or the four.
Oh yeah, that's right. If we're talking about the eight or the four, if we're talking about the 14-feet difference and we utilize the whole 14 feet, so that'd be 14 divided by 2.31, so it's maybe five PSI, five or six PSI.
So I'm assuming there is some guarantee of work or warranty of some sort on the original tower the way it is today, right? As it's built. So if another company comes in and is modifying that to four, four B, does that complicate matters if something does go wrong in the next six months to a year after, after we're ready to go? And then there's a fight between the companies of who did something wrong?
It could potentially be that. That is correct. I mean, if you'd have to figure out, you know, who was responsible for causing whatever that was, that's wrong. But there is potential for that.
Is there any way to mitigate that in the way we, if we go with that route of mitigating that upfront so that we still get the guarantee?
Yeah, that's a great point. That, part of an agreement or a settlement, I guess, with the services.
So you have, yeah, so you have a maintenance bond on the tower as it is. So the new contractor that would be lowering it would, you know, provide a bond for the work they're doing. But yeah, it's awfully hard to mitigate it because you're trying to look in that fuzzy crystal ball as to what might happen and, well, guess wrong. So all you can really do is, is say, okay, everything is okay with the tower as it is right now. And, you know, if something would happen down the road, what caused that? Was it because of, you know, the new tower or the changes or the old tower? So what's the weld breaks? Anything? Well, who did the welding? If it was the welding on the, by the current contractor, well then it'd fall under their maintenance bond. If it's the welding that broke from, if the new contractor did, it would be the new one. Now, you know, of course, the old contractor, you say, well, this weld broke because of the work that the new contractor was doing.
I'm just thinking if someone serviced a new computer that you buy, all of a sudden your warranty on that computer is, they say, nope, we can't honor that because somebody else worked on it.
Yeah, we, we would still have the bond for the work that they did, but we definitely could get into an argument of this broke because contractor one, this failed because contractor two, two did this. Yeah, I, I, I don't know a way to mitigate that.
Could the, could this company somehow work as a subcontractor with the original, say any work you do, we're going to be checking out and.
Could.
And then we're, and then any, anything that we go through at later times through the, the original contractor and not through this company, that they have to work out all that other stuff, but.
That's a possibility. Both of them would have to agree to that, have them approach possibly. I know we did talk to the current contractor and they said, no, we don't, we don't do this raising and lowering as a business. So we thought that would be great, just have the current contractor do that work, but they said, no, they're not set up for that.
That's definitely something to think about is financial implications of, of losing that type of guarantee and warranty on the work and, right?
Yeah, very good point. And as far as Brian's question goes, as far as USDA funding with this, I, I don't have any answer to that.
If the responsibility of that tower when it was built was on the people that we hired to do this, then they should have some type of a contract to fix it. That means that they should be responsible for years to make sure that it is what we originally asked for.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what your maintenance bond period was.
So I guess, I'm surely on this, I think Forrest has done what we've asked him to do, which is decide that's give us a recommendation. I, I'm just, I think we're at the point where it makes sense to move forward, approve it, send it to Snyder and see if it'll honor that and fix it for us. And if they won't, then we have another decision, have other decisions to make. Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
Yep, very much is.
So do we, definitely because this, this is the high level, you're saying high level to raise the existing tower.
Oh, that's a risk, risk level.
Risk level is high because of what the height would be after you put the extensions on. Is the, would you have to change the, the, the shape of the legs or could these existing legs be raised higher on a pillar?
That's what we don't know. We'd have to do an evaluation of 60-year-old steel to see what that steel could handle, what kind of wind loads it could take. It would be a structural evaluation by a water tower structural firm that would need to determine that.
Is that something that we're interested in doing then?
That's a decision that needs to be made, but let me ask you one more question. Your recommendation is to lower the existing?
Yes.
The tower?
Yes.
The new?
The new tower.
That's what I want.
Yes. Well, the new tower.
Okay.
I'm perfectly fine raising the old tower, like Shirley is suggesting, it's just there's a lot more that goes into that that are a lot more unknowns and that's why that risk level is higher, just because, yeah, raising that up, the legs are battered, so can they go straight? Do we need new foundations? Is the legs that are there capable of handling that additional load and wind load? Lot of options, lot more risk with that, but yes, that could be done. And that one would, you know, is, has all yeses as well going across. It's just a higher risk venture. But we could sure, you know, if, if that's the direction the board wants to go, then, you know, that can be done to get structural engineers involved and start measuring thicknesses of steel and looking at the, the, we do have the shop drawings from the 1960s, so we have, you know, what type of steel was used, but don't know how good it is.
Is it, is it, I guess, just to see where things, that with Snyder is it best just to send this documentation and recommendation as is to see what their response is, to see if it's worth us asking for us to do more work? Because we kind of got into that range of we're willing to incur for cost. And then what is the cost of this recommendation?
You're looking at around half million dollars. When we talked to the contractor, they thought they'd maybe do it for a little less, but I think for budget numbers, their half million dollars is, is appropriate.
Okay, so, I mean, that. This will at least give us a way to test the waters of Snyder to see where they're at.
Okay, so that's kind of, I'm satisfied with what Brian wants and what Forrest has explained is to take this recommendation and submit it to Snyder to see what to respond.
And then give them, tell them what is the next, you know, their response. I mean, isn't that reasonable?
Yes, yes, very reasonable. So that's kind of the conclusion to the whole thing is, and I personally think it's reasonable to do that, it actually, to give them the recommendation and let them look at it and let them have the say too, and come back to us on the next utility board meeting and see what we come up with to allow us.
But not, I guess, I would hope they would provide a, a guess no versus a, you know, some other slant that's not a decision, I guess, right?
We can explain that to them.
Okay.
So when the board will be willing to.
Present.
Fail that, yes, we need a motion to do that.
Crawford.
Moved by building and did by.
I'll make a second.
Second by Sherman.
He did a good job, this was very explicit.
Crawford?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes, Forrest, thanks again for doing that.
And Kim, yes.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Forrest.
Okay, Snyder and Associates. A project update, Jeff Gottman of Snyder and Associates.
Yeah, you know the.
So I guess I have in front of you tonight for consideration of the application on the water name project. And I guess before I get into that, I, I would say that you're on the right track. Submit that report to our staff and Hank Lee for their review and I'm sure they will have an answer for you next meeting as you are requesting.
Were you going to tell us it was off 14 feet, Jeff?
I'm sorry?
Jeff, were you, were you ever going to tell us it was off 14 feet or just let us guess?
I couldn't quite understand what you're asking.
We've always been talking about this thing, may eight, but that's what's going around town, it's really 14. We had to go hire somebody else to tell us the truth. Never mind.
I told you it was 14 feet. I explained that why it's set.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, so on the water name project, all the work is done as far as the structural part, the water names and the services and all of that are connected and functioning properly. We have, last month you approved a pay application for that work. The remaining is a little bit of the seeding, approximately 40% along with building any trenches that settle this winter and final cleanup and grading and, and all of that work. And so that work is worth around $20,000. We recommended that you hold back an additional $40,000 of retainage. That's a fairly common thing at the end of a project is to, you know, hold back about two times the work remaining in your retainage side. And so by the terms of your contract, it's been more than 30 days since substantial completion. And it would be appropriate to release the retainage down to that $60,000 level. And so that's what this pay application recommends, is that you go ahead and pay your contractor $156,355.85, which is the vast majority of the retainage. And that you would keep back $60,000 of covered remaining work to be completed this spring when weather allows.
Are there engineering fees on this?
Any engineering fees?
No, that's, this, this is just contractor money. The engineering fees are totally separate invoices. This is not part of this, this dollar figure.
So we need a motion to. It's not engineering. Moved by Shirley.
Second.
Second by Brian.
Okay, need a vote. Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes.
And Kim, yes. Okay, upcoming utility insurance renewal, possible request for proposal.
Okay, our insurance, property insurance that we survived on April 1st. Last year we had asked for bids and all these things. Today we're trying to do it early enough where we can receive bids. Or you can stay with the existing insurance company, EMC. So it's up to the board to decide whether we receive proposal, with our coming insurance, or to stay with what we have.
I think you've always been happy with what they've done and as far as the work they've done for us, I think.
What, what's our regular schedule of due diligence? I mean, normally companies, every so many years they do evaluations on that type of stuff, so I'm just curious.
It's very early and for the last three, four years we've been keeping it, getting bid. So it's really up to the board to decide whether to stay with what you have or to receive proposal. Last year we were in that dilemma of being late to sign a proposal, so some company gave proposal before the others. This year we're trying to not do that. We tried to, we tried. Okay, I got it. We tried to, we tried to do it in advance. So if we're going to receive proposal, we're going to advertise, we're going to let everybody bid on Wednesday. If we're not, we'll move on with the company we have and get into the rest of it. So it's just up to the board now, the two options, and you can decide whether to receive bid, receive proposal, or continue with EMC.
And you have money that this is, this car, that we might just receive this and then we, or no. Last time I'm doing that, we ended up with EMC and they had to lower price, but if we don't bid this, then how are we going to know?
That's, like I said, it's up to the board to make that decision and based on your decision, I think it's.
Well, I think we got EMC come in and, and talk to us about it and the other company wasn't ready.
The last year.
Yeah.
I'll try to avoid that this year.
Yeah.
So starting early in January, making that decision, whether to receive proposal or to go continue with EMC.
I think I just sent EMC, it's going to go through the hassle of doing what we did last year.
My only thought is if we do that, if we continue this year, personally I'd like to see some sort of schedule of, of when we do due diligence, if it's three years or something along those lines, so that we know, can, can gauge whether or not we're, we're getting the competitive bid or, you know, so.
Yeah, it's a hard decision, but it's a good decision to make now, so we have the time to, to go which way. I'm going to ask the council to make the same, which, so.
How long have you been with EMC?
For as long as I've been here, which is 30 years now, so and before that, I think maybe 35 or as far as I know, as, as long as I've been here, we have EMC.
And you've always been very happy with them.
Yeah, we have.
So I, I think maybe this year we just stay with them and then next year start doing like what Neil said.
Yeah. It's a bold decision and I'll take it from there.
Even if it's not a full proposal back to the, to the board itself, but just knowing that, like, if you've contacted some others and gauged what the, the market is for insurance, just to make sure that what we're getting from EMC, even though we like the service, if there's something that's substantially less expensive and more efficient for us and there's a reputable set of companies. Again, it's, it's just from a due diligence perspective, so.
Yeah, I, I'm always you on that, but specifically with the insurance, each town has different kinds of proposal that they bear on it and we have different amount of people to insure them now, property and stuff. So that kind of proposal or that kind of insurance, last year we went through that and we didn't go anywhere. This year, if we're going to go with proposal, I'll be putting a stand-up proposal in the paper that all the companies bidding on that. I can do, I know exactly what you mean and I, I can do that on the side. Uh, I can do, I know exactly what you mean and I, I can do that on the side and give it to you and work on it, you know, I can get... I can get it from this other town, Dr. You know, this is easy to do. But I still need the direction, it's kind of where to go. Because really, last year we struggled with that, you know, and we all felt like we're not gonna do it again like that easily. And that's why I'm starting with Jack. It's like, we give a proposal, put something in the paper, anybody bids on it, it's things what we have. At least we, we could think I have to come and do the, do the, do the company that's getting insured us, yeah, EMC. We have to go look at the property that we know all that's on it. So, uh, we have to allow him to do that or stop him and then do the proposal. That's why I'm, I'm not trying to put the board on the spot, I'm gonna say, but, but you need to help me to avoid what happened last year. And I would be saying the same thing to the council, I hope all the council members here, so I don't have to say it again. You gotta help me here to avoid that struggle. So...
Do we have a motion?
I made a motion, we stay with the same company, satisfied with that. I don't think there's anything wrong with us doing that like that next year, to let them have the opportunity.
I'll send it in.
Yep, okay, we can send it. Will you vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Balding? Is he still on?
A lot of them.
He dropped off a long time ago.
Today is his first day, so we need to be patient with him.
Please leave your message for five, one, five, three, one, four, two, three, nine.
So...
So Kim, yes.
Okay, so a motion, Ken? Okay.
Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget annual report.
So if we look at the new budget, I think the first thing you'll notice is that we really don't change it much. It's been the same the last couple of years. Really, the only changes are maybe moving some of the... More than doing high places, but this is basically the same budget we looked at last year. It, it's pretty much a fixed budget. It really doesn't allow us to make a whole lot of changes. And I don't know if Ash has anything he wants to add to that.
For the new members, Neil and, and Dan is, uh, the budget, Neil, you've been aware of the sewer budget, the fixed budget. Doesn't really change because it's an operational budget, not a capital budget. So most of it is gas, man, they roll all the stuff up, you have to, uh, get going. Not a lot of the changes, you see, he highlighted the hill stuff, which is stuff that, the boundary issue, the principal interest change from year to year. Uh, stuff like power plant equipment, all the stuff, he brought it and you see, most of it is here, a long vision of, uh, the steady expenses that he has then, and not too many stuff that we go into deep discussion about it. Uh, and Neil is very well familiar with budget and all the stuff. When we have that big issues and all the stuff, it will be aside from really the operating budget. So what he's presenting here, I look at is the standard budget. If you look at the last five years, it's very similar, you know? I recommend that we have the budget for him and he has, uh, also the board that he go over.
Well, we do this every year too. It's where we compare our electrical usage.
Okay, I got it.
We compare, we compare electrical usage, water usage and everything with previous five years. And, I mean, if you look through the electrical usage, water, it's all pretty close. It really doesn't change a lot. And, uh, other than, weather plays into it a lot as to how much power and everything that we use. It, it's amazing how close we come at the end of the year, especially when you look at the water used in twenty-two versus twenty-three. How much, how many gallons we purchased from Xenia, that, that's really close for a whole year. The only other thing on here would be the wind turbine, which still doesn't work and I'm trying to get Xenia to fix it.
Vestas.
Vestas.
That's it?
You said Xenia.
Oh, I said Xenia, Vestas, my bad. I'm hungry. Uh, so with Vestas, our biggest problem was maintenance used to be done by an outfit, Vestas of Minnesota, a house under Vestas of Iowa. And I'm struggling to get them to honor the service contract they have with us. They have come and looked at it, they figured out why it doesn't work right now. And they said, maybe we can get some parts and fix it for us. But, uh, that was a couple of weeks ago, the last time I talked to them about it. And I know there's something as old as that. Wind turbines are like computers, they, uh, they update them every year and they're always different. So parts are hard to get. So we might be waiting a while to get a few parts. I don't know what the parts are, but hopefully we do. It's, we're losing money when nothing is run, basically. So, other than that, it did produce almost as much as it did in two thousand and twenty-two, even though it hasn't run for the last, probably, probably a month, something like that, it hasn't run. So we're still going down that road. That's really all I got to offer then.
When do we pay that service contract yet?
We do it quarterly and we did not, so they didn't do, there's general maintenance that needs to be done on it a couple of times a year and that's what was always being done on it since it was put up. It did not get done in two thousand and twenty-three because they switched from, they switched their, from Vestas of Minnesota to Vestas of Iowa. I've talked to these guys from Iowa, the head guy for Vestas. He said he, he really just kind of blew it a little bit off that he, we don't know anything about contract. So he said, I, he said he would look into it, I don't know if he will or not. But we didn't make the last payment simply because they are doing their due diligence and doing maintenance on it. So that's where we stand right now, it's still...
You have a copy of the contract?
I've got a copy of it on my desk and it's, I think it runs for another year and a half. And I don't know why we would pay them anything on that contract if they're not gonna do just the annual maintenance on it like they're supposed to. It's like they just dropped it, don't wanna do it anymore. Anyway.
So we need a motion to approve, uh, the budget at that moment.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, vote, Crawford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Balding?
Yes.
Kim, yes. Okay, Xenia brought water.
This is what we got here, uh, last week from Xenia. And I know they've told us that rates are gonna keep building up a little bit every year. This is their proposal for this year, this is how much we're gonna, gonna raise rates. I think it starts, it started many years ago, right?
Yeah.
This is really no different than what Ben gave, a long, a really long, a couple of years ago when they had a representative here. He said for the next, if you remember, the board members that were here, they had made some errors on their rate increases. I asked them to make it up for them. So I think that's where we're still at.
So how are we setting, to help raise it or just heading with that? To go with the okay?
I would ask Ash that, he would be better with the numbers than I am. I, it's not something we would want to do.
It'll take effect in May. I think we can wait up to next month because we only have two minutes to adjourn because the city's gonna need. So we can wait.
Last year, last year we got, uh, rate scenarios prepared by Jim, different classes, can we do that again?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. And we have until May, so we have time to decide on this, okay? So we can move to the next one, eleven. I give you, because we only have one minute to kind of, you have the report, you know, I will, I will go with that and him on a separate discussion to discuss it with him, so we can adjourn if you'd like to, obviously, whether we have anything. Do we have anything?
Uh, the only thing I got to add is about a transformer at the end of the day for thirty thousand dollars for a new quick start. Then I think I told everybody that was a, that was a great hit. Looking at possibly, they're gonna build another building, Carl's shoulder way. Depending on the size of transformer they need there, I might ask if I have another one. But I talked to the electrician and asked him if we could, if he could give me a more exact amount of usage for it. And he said he would. And if we could go down in size and transformer, we got a couple, we want to be in already, so we wouldn't have to go out and buy one. So I'm still waiting to hear back on that. One other thing real quick, I talked to DGR, engineer for the electrical side. And he said there's a grant available to help us do infrastructure improvements. And they're gonna put our name in it, it's a federal grant. And he said, don't expect miracles out of it. Normally the bigger utilities get that kind of money, but he's putting a lot of the smaller, uh, municipals around the state in it just to see if we can get some of the money to help make some improvements. That'll be down the road before we know anything.
Ken? Okay, thank you.